Good evening and welcome to the regular board meeting of the Board of Education of Castro Valley Unified School District. It's October 13, 2021. Are there any requests for speaking on items on the closed session agenda? The answer is no. And hearing that, I will recess our board meeting to closed session. And we will be back live here at approximately 6 o'clock. Thank you very much. Okay, good evening, and I will call the meeting back to order. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Castro Valley Unified School. It is Wednesday, October 13, 2021. Unfortunately, tonight, we have trustee Cusack is traveling, and even more unfortunate, Vice President Theodore is not feeling well. So tonight, trustee Whitaker will be at the acting VP and clerk for the board. I'll report out the activity of the board. The board took no action in closed session tonight. And we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes? We do want to make one move, is that right? We want to move item 9B up to right before item 4. There'll be the approval of the personnel report. We'll put it right after the statement on public comment, if that's okay.
I'll move approval of the agenda as amended.
I second that.
Thank you for moving second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. So the agenda's approved, 3 to 0. The mission statement, trustee Whitaker.
In partnership with the community, Castro Valley Unified School District educates students in a learning environment that is safe, nurturing, and culturally responsive. Students are guided by excellent inspired staff utilizing innovative instruction, curricula, and technology.
Great, thank you very much. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to speak form, the blue forms on the back table, or via the Google form on the district website, and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn. And then you'll be allowed to make public comment. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from speakers under public comment, but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. Thank you. So we'll move on now to what had been item 9B. This is approval of the personnel report. This is an action item.
Yes, I move that we approve the personnel report.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's removed and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. Personnel item. So trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. So the the personnel reports approved, and I think perhaps you want to make some comments.
Thank you, President Howard. We have the great honor to have our special education slash self the director present today that the board just approved, Mr. Kevin Nizario. The process that we took was really rigorous where we had outstanding candidates apply to our district. And through two panels and an hour and 45 minutes of debrief, we came up with an excellent candidate. So he's here today to just give a few words and also congratulations. We are very honored and happy to have Kevin join our team, Mr. Kevin Nizario.
Good evening. Thank you, board, for allowing me to speak today. I want to thank the community and I'm sorry. I want to thank the community for allowing me to be here and for providing me the opportunity to be the the special education self the director for Castro Valley Unified School District. It means a lot to me personally because I grew up in the community. I came through Castro Valley Public Schools and was born and raised in Castro Valley. So I have a lot of ties and connections and memories and feelings about the community. And it just feels really special to to come back and serve the students that I feel like need the most support and and intervention through the community that I grew up in. So again, thank you for for allowing me the opportunity to do that in the community I care about very deeply. And I look forward to partnering with you all to to better the lives of our students. Thank you.
We're all going to welcome you, Mr. Nizario. And I was going to say welcome to the community, but welcome back to your community. We're very happy to have you here.
Yes, of course, I know I know you, Mr. Nizario, from your previous engagement at a school and had worked with you. You're always very professional, very good. You were the go to guy in so many different situations that I remember. People would ask. So welcome home.
And I again, just welcome. We're excited to have you just for the audience and for people listening. Mr. Nizario comes with outstanding credentials. We're very fortunate to have him. And I'm just glad to see him here. And I'm also glad to see his mom actually here when he accepted. He just gave his speech. So awesome. Thank you. Welcome.
If I could add just a word, I want to add something. Mr. Nizario is not only tremendously skilled and has a great vision for equity and making sure that every student, especially students, should they be differently able, has the best opportunities to succeed. There's a comment that that I shared with his mom earlier that is so true. It's rare to find somebody that is so skilled as a leader and so passionate and has risen so quickly, but is also so humble and puts others before him. And that's so clear. And we're very excited to have you as a part of the team, Kevin.
I'll just sum it all up by repeating what Dolly said, and that's welcome home. We're glad you're with us. So we'll move on to our student board report, or member report, excuse me, Jennifer.
Hi, good evening. All right. So our first quarter just ended. So we're on to the second quarter now. Marshall Elementary had their walkathon on October 8th, also on October 8th last week. Well, first of all, last week at the high school, CVHS students had their homecoming spirit week. Our first homecoming after COVID, which was awesome. The week ended with our homecoming assembly and both of our JV and varsity football teams taking the win against Monroe on Friday. And on Saturday night, we had our first dance after coming back after COVID. We held our homecoming dance on the CVHS stadium outside on the field. And we had great attendance with over 1,500 CVHS students.
What was the theme?
Okay. So our overall theme was Dream Worlds. So basically, each sub theme, the freshmen were like under the sea, like Atlantis. Sophomers were a galaxy far, far away. Juniors were Neverland, and then seniors were superheroes. Oh, yeah, and juniors won. So go ahead. So, yeah, that was awesome. Parkdale Elementary is hosting a shoe drive, which is lasting until next Wednesday, October 20. Vanoy Elementary is having a fundraiser at the Lake Shabon Marketplace next Thursday, October 21. And I believe at the end of this month, we're having our red ribbon week. So, yeah. Oh, and I had a great time at the DSLA meeting today with Ms. Marty and everyone else.
Great. Thank you. So we have other special guests here tonight from Canyon Middle School. So we're happy to say welcome to Principal Wong and her team. And
Yes, we're excited to have Canyon featured tonight. So excited to have you, Ms. Wong and this Blackman and the entire team. And so we're looking forward to the presentation. Thank you.
Okay. So thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. Thank you to the board and the whole governance team for inviting us here to share an update on Canyon Middle School. I also want to thank our staff who showed up this evening. We have Assistant Principal Ms. Blackman. We also have Ms. Suzie Moran, who happens to be in the audience as well. Welcome. Ms. Kate Shen and Ms. Effie Sue are student activities directors as well. So thank you. For the past year and a half, it's been an incredible journey, to say the least. The start of this school year has been remarkable in so many ways. The excitement of students returning to school, the newness of welcoming back our entire student population, and the reality of middle school with all the energy, anticipation, independence, and awkwardness of middle school can feel overwhelming at times. But it's important to point out that during this stage in our students' lives, which is a time of phenomenal growth, that we as a school community continue to grow as well. So tonight, we're pleased to share with you some of the ways that Canyon's overwhelming innovation, strength, spirit, and community are alive and well. So this beautiful mural welcomes students as they enter campus and is an inspiring reminder of how education can empower our students to be change makers and positively influence their world. We're very proud of the ways that our academic program continues to grow and develop to meet the needs of our students and support our goals of cultivating independent learners and critical thinkers. Our staff are incredibly hardworking and committed, and we're pleased to share tonight just a few highlights and examples of the overall work that continues at Canyon. And to talk more about this, it's my pleasure to introduce our Assistant Principal Jennifer Blackman.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. I'm excited to be here. It's my first board meeting. So the one thing I want to talk about right now are some academics. The first program we're going to talk about is Power Math. So Power Math is, we would like to highlight it. It's our sixth grade new program. We know that solid foundation in math early in middle school is vitally important. So Michelle Van Tugan and Susan Gutten have developed a program that develops that looks at growth mindset and building confidence through exploration and reinforcement of key concepts in math. Students are encouraged to find patterns, be creative thinkers, and teachers are more like facilitators in this class. It's helping to develop skills. It's also doing confidence through fun. And for math, that's really important. It builds high interest activities, and it also challenges them. It's this kind of reframing of an instructional approach that reflects our commitment to be innovative and to look at math in different ways. Here, you're seeing photos of what is like, looks like they're tiling. This is actually, I watched them do this. It's more like Sudoku, but it's with multiplication and addition. So you can make the connection. And it's actually, the kids loved it. So I'm going to show you guys a clip of it in action. It's actually fun to watch. And just to note, the two people talking are actually students, but it'll look like a little different. All right. So are you confused about right here? Yeah. All right. So that was just a clip of two students, teachers working the room, and they're facilitating that together. This is how you do it. This is how you find your answer. They're even showing where to count. And so the students are really empowered in this program, and they seem to enjoy math again. And they have this in conjunction with their math class. There we go. Another exciting development is the introduction of the Ethnic Studies elective in eighth grade. There's been a lot of hype around it, and it's for this year. We are piloting it. It's a semester-long course. Chrissy Emmons is the one teaching it. The syllabus really does align to the California Department of Education frameworks for ethnic studies. It really expands along social studies. It's giving you more about identity, history, systems of power, social movement, equity. It's allowing the eighth graders to really expand their knowledge analyzing and really discussing some of the deeper concepts there. All right. So students participating in those semester-long courses have the opportunity to engage in self-reflection and discussion of historical and current events that then they will focus this on a on a final big project where they can apply what they've learned to create positive change. It also empowers. It's powerful to hear the discussion of the voices of the students. It gives them a framework to build their confidence on social issues and inspires to think critically and engage in global citizenship. We appreciate the support of the of the district leaders here and for everyone on the school board for just even launching this flagship program at Canyon. The kids are really, and students are really enjoying it. All the feedback is very positive from them. So now with that said, I just kind of want to turn it back to April. She's going to talk about connectiveness, but I'm enjoying just being up at Canyon. It's my first year, and it's been amazing. Thank you, April.
Great job. Okay, so as always, our focus continues to be on connectedness as well with both our students and our families to make sure that they feel connected and a part of the Canyon community. And that's no small feat after a stretch of distance learning, after the challenges of coming back after hybrid, being at home and separated from one another. And yet still, we're committed to ensuring that our school has the needed social emotional supports that we know are so important during this stage in their lives. The transition from elementary school and preparation for high school is a very unique time where students are developing their own identities, practicing more independence, and experiencing a lot of changes. So some of you may remember, a few years ago, we shared that we were able to create a space for our Canyon Wellness Center. And with newly increased staffing, thank you, we're able to provide services to students in this space five days a week. We're also hopeful that it will continue to grow as a community space for expanded programs and activities as the year goes on, as the years go on. And this year, we're very, very pleased to have a dedicated full-time social worker who's joined our team, Ms. Lindsay Sanchez. She's been a fabulous addition to our counseling program. And we also host staff from Castro Valley-based Eden Counseling, who provide one-on-one small group and individual counseling services on site as well. There's also the Wellness Together Grant that provides student telehealth services after hours. And we're just excited. We have some upcoming counseling groups. Some of them have started, and some of them are starting soon on topics relevant to our students. We really form these groups based upon the needs that we see for our students. So most recently, social skills coping with anxiety, grief, and loss. Young men's group and self-compassion, right now serving between about 30 to 40 students total. So the Wellness Center also provides hygiene items and products that are needed to students. Also does regularly scheduled lunchtime check-ins and also hosts an art club and some activities. In addition to providing ongoing support to staff and families, so just really, really excited about the growth and what we've been able to start here again with your support. And just know that the trajectory for this will continue to grow here at Canyon. So moving forward, we're excited to eventually launch a website, see a creation of a mural for the Wellness Center that's been planned in partnership with our art classes. And it's just something we're very proud of. So wanted to share an update on that. And also this year, we're proud to offer a variety of ways for families to get connected through our Canyon PTA as our umbrella parent organization, but also as through our groups such as our Asian American and Pacific Islander Family Group, which launched last spring. Also, our Padres Unidos, which has been around for several years as well, our African American Alliance Network, which is a joint partnership with Creekside Middle School. It's a middle school AAN. So we're very proud of that continuing. And new for this year are LGBTQ plus family group, which meets monthly as well. So with our family groups and also looking forward with our PTA, looking to continue something that started last year, our community conversations, which was were a series of events bringing students and families together through building community, learning more about Canyon history, our Canyon campus. And we're looking and excited to keep that going too. And personally, I found that creating the space for parents to connect with one another, connect with staff, share their experiences and brainstorm ideas on how we can support our students just helps to improve our entire school community. Really, that ongoing dialogue has been so valuable. And finally, we want to take a moment to highlight the leadership and community-focused spirit of our very own students. Obviously, the best people here to share what it means to be back on campus, how the year is going. And so to share a little bit, it's my pleasure to introduce some of our Canyon Associated Student Body Officers. We have Ryan Kwan, eighth grade class president, Kevin Lee, ASB Vice President, Lacey Brown, ASB Treasurer, and Alex Bland and Ellie Wong, ASB co-presidents. So they'll come up and share a little bit.
Hi, my name is Ryan Kwan. Being back at school this year has been so beneficial because we get to socially interact with our friends and teachers. This makes learning so much more fun and encouraging.
Hello, I'm Kevin Lee, and I'm the ASB Vice President. Distance learning, yeah, not the best because there's this thing called the pandemic going around. It wasn't fun. However, our staff are working pretty hard. I can tell you that firsthand from my experiences to make sure that this year is as good as any other year.
Hi, I'm Lacey Brown. And while going back to school has been an adjustment in my life, it has been beneficial to my learning experience, allowed me to participate in new activities and allowed me to make new friends.
Hi, I'm Ellie Wong. Even though coming back to campus, we've been facing new challenges. We're facing them together. And coming back to school has been fun since we are one step closer to life before the pandemic.
Hi, my name is Alex Bland. And adding on to what Ellie said, we are overcoming challenges together and having facing new opportunities. One thing I've noticed around campus is that there has been a small issue with littering, but I saw this as an opportunity to reach out to some teachers and saw this as an opening for CJSF students around campus. And there is many of them, being one of them myself, as an opportunity to for volunteering hours and community service at school.
And I want to thank Ms. Sue and Ms. Shen for their leadership with our students, our student officers, student government, really empowering students to identify challenges that they're seeing on campus, how we can work together to solve them together. And I just really appreciate their input and everything that they're doing. They're phenomenal. So I also wanted to spotlight a really positive story about leadership and a sense of community that our students have demonstrated. You might have recently heard about the unfortunate social media trend of vandalism at schools throughout the country. And I'm proud to share multiple examples of students who initiated on their own opportunities to give back fundraising and wanting to do something positive for their school. And so just independently doing some community service. They're, of course, supported by incredible families who represent our amazing parent community, and we're just so thankful to our students and families for their overwhelming supports. There's some photos here that were shared with me, a couple that I took as well. And it's really that connection and kind of partnership and coming together that reflects the Canyon community. So I wanted to highlight that as well. Our kids are fabulous. So in short, innovation, inspiration, empowerment, connection, and generosity. These are just a few of the stories that really embody Canyon's continued growth and progress. We are always wanting to improve and find ways to better support our kids. And we know we have more work to do, but we appreciate your continued support in doing that together. So thank you.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Canyon Middle School student Michaela Gathright. The governance team, along with Canyon Middle School, are proud to honor Michaela Gathright. When you think of Michaela, three words immediately come to mind: leader, advocate, and caring. Since she started her middle school career in sixth grade, Michaela has been involved and generous with her time and efforts towards building community and bringing people together. She stepped in to help lead the BSU club during distance learning at a time that was very challenging for many students. And she went above and beyond to build connections with other clubs in solidarity and support around social justice issues. She maintains a strong focus on her studies and is an active member of the Avid Program while also using her voice and letting her leadership skills to develop a more inclusive school culture. Now, as an eighth grader, Michaela continues to use that passion to advocate for justice and encourage her peers daily in those conversations. In addition to her leadership responsibilities in the BSU, Michaela serves as a web leader, mentoring current sixth grade students and supporting their transition to middle school. She expresses a continued desire to start and connect with a variety of heritage clubs at Canyon to increase allyship and connection on campus. Students and staff appreciate her kind heart and admire her desire to make the world a better place. We look forward to celebrating her in all of her future endeavors. The governance team joins Canyon Middle School in honoring Michaela Gathright as an outstanding student.
Michaela, do you want to introduce your family or any guests that came with you tonight? Put you on the spot, sorry.
Hi, my name's Michaela, and one very important person that came with me would be my mom. I believe my dad is logged in on the Zoom call. My parents are so, my parents are amazing. They support me in all my endeavors and have pushed me to they've pushed me to greatness, and I'm so thankful for them, and I love them. they've pushed me to greatness and I'm so thankful for them and I love them so much. Thank you.
So I would like to call up Lori Schmick as our volunteer honorary for Canyon Middle. Okay, the Governance Team along with Canyon Middle School are proud to honor Lori Schmick, the parent volunteer. Lori has been an incredible supportive member of the school community for many years. She currently serves as the PTA Secretary and has served on the Canyon PTA in a number of roles. Continually dedicating her time and energy towards building relationships and making the school community more inclusive for students and families. Prior to the pandemic, Lori could be found helping to chaperone middle school dances, coordinate book fair fundraisers, and hosting staff appreciation events all year long. In the past year and a half, she has also helped to facilitate events through the PTA platform and to bring the school closer together through community building, even when distance learning kept us physically apart. Lori is an effective communicator, organizer, and advocate who is always seeking to strengthen the partnership between home and school in the interest of serving all our students. Congratulations on this honor, Lori, as it is so well deserved. The Governance Team joins Canyon Middle School in honoring Lori Schmick as an outstanding volunteer.
Lori, do you want to make a few comments? We'd be happy.
So this is my current middle schooler. I have a junior in special education, so I'm really excited to meet you. Our new special ed director. And then I also have a freshman who all went through Canyon. And I just, you know, it's always been my goal to try to be a partner with the school, whether it's in special education or in my general ed students education. And I'm just so glad that we have so many opportunities to volunteer and partner with such an amazing community of staff members, teachers. I just really thank April for all of her leadership through from when she became the principal at Canyon and moving through this pandemic. It's she's just done an amazing job and it's so I'm so thankful to be able to work with April, Ms. Blackman, Kate, and Effie on the PTA team. And it's it's a joy to serve our community and to serve Canyon. Thank you.
Have a few board comments here if there are any. Flavander.
It's my first board meeting back and a couple of board meetings I was out for a while. So it's really exciting to see Canyon Middle School here. I'm so excited. And I want to thank Principal Wong and Assistant Principal Blackman for your presentation. There are a couple of things I just want to highlight. I'm not great at math, but that looked fun. I was gonna say that. And ethnic studies is something that's been really important to this board for a really long time. It's something that we advocated for with the state and with other board members across the state. And to see it come into action and be see it being implemented at Canyon. You know, it really warms my heart because this is who we are. This is about us really teaching history in a way that is about how history is and helping people see that we are all come from different places, but we're a great community that is very enriched by our differences. And our differences make us better. And so I just wanted to thank you for that. So great to see the Wellness Center come on board and provide the social and emotional support our kids need, especially during a global pandemic. So I really appreciate you presenting on that. And I just love, you know, our our diversity continues with the expansion of the LGBTQ plus parent leadership group and to see the API, the Padres Unidos and the A A N. You know, all those families coming together and creating a community within our community. Our schools are our community. And Castro Valley is not well known for much besides the hospital and the schools. And to be able to have that space is so important for the development of the children in our schools and for us as a community. So thank you for all the work for the administrators and the teachers here in the room and to the families and the students. I really appreciated the perspectives of Brian, Kevin, Lacey, Alice, and Eli. Thank you for sharing today and coming out. And Michaela, just want to say you sound like a very kind, intelligent force for good. Keep up the good work. And Lori, I know Dot isn't here tonight. She really wanted to be and she really wants to present this to you. I would just wanted to let you know. And just thank you so much for your dedication to our community. You help build a better community. Thank you.
So Canyon Middle School, both of my children went to Canyon Middle School. My son, when that was the only school, my daughter actually had signed up for Creekside. There wasn't room. She went to Canyon and then there was space. And then she said, oh, no, I love it here at Canyon Middle School. I want to stay. So both of my children really loved their experience at Canyon Middle School. Were in various clubs like Chess Club and a number of different items. I want to say that I see more and more even improvements from those times with the Wellness Center now opening so that there's counseling for kids who have social emotional needs. I'm really so pleased to be able to see that for our kids. And I, the PTA groups, wow, like five of them, the PTA, the Asian Parent Group, the LGBTQ Family Group, the African American Alliance, and the Padres Unidos. I think that is so great, such a rich community Canyon is. And, you know, I mean, you should be so proud of yourselves. Michaela, congratulations on this award and I am sure we will see much more of you in the future. And on behalf of Dot Theodore, I'm sorry she wasn't here. She wanted to give you the award, Lori. But thank you so much for coming and for all the volunteer work that you've done for Canyon parents and students. So just not to, I I'm going to try not to repeat because everything everybody said is so, so true. I think it's really important for us to recognize that the leadership at the school with Ms. Wong, Ms. Blackman, and the teachers that you see here and the entire staff, the office staff. They're all there to support our students. And I think through the pandemic, you know, whether it be on while we were doing distance learning or now in person. There is so much that happens during the day to support students. That's just, you know, you can't, you have to write a book each day about all the things that are happening. I'm so excited to see Power Math because I love mathematics and having been through a lot of training in math. You know, lenses on learning and all of these things. It's exactly what we need to engage students to look at different choices, different ways of solving a problem, collaborating. I'm obviously extremely excited about ethnic studies and the pilot because we, you're trend setters and it is something that we're going to move forward with in many, many different ways in at the high school as well in the future. But and I love seeing the Wellness Center. I remember Ms. Wong talking about the Wellness Center. You know, it's like, we're going to make it happen. We're going to make it happen. And you sure did. It's absolutely wonderful. Family groups, it's exemplary. I mean, we should share that really throughout the the state, everybody understanding that yes, we have ways to communicate with families. But there it's important for families to communicate with each other and and build that connection. And again, student leaders, you are awesome. You are you were right on. And all the volunteer work that you do at school and raising funds to help without anyone saying anything to you. The initiatives you took says a lot about you. And Michaela, you are awesome. The Black Student Union is a trend setter that we have actually been to some of the programs they put together. And I really want to thank you for including Creekside and being one unit. It means a lot to everybody. And I know that all of us have been to the programs that you have at Canyon for different events. And I want to thank you for that. And and Ms. Schmick, I can tell you, Ms. Dot Theodore tried so hard to be here. But I also want to thank you. You know, you talked about how you feel fortunate, you feel that there are so many ways to volunteer. Well, I want you to know that we're fortunate to have you and people like you that really make this community what it is. So thank you so much for everything.
I'll just say very quickly, what a great presentation as it is every year from Canyon. This Canyon is always one of the highlights of the board presentations from the schools. I'll pick out a couple of quick things here that I really impressed me. One is the Power Math. Because that's a traditional challenge for us in all the grades and anything you can do to help our students learn math is a great thing. I'm really happy to see that the Wellness Center has been realized. That's a terrific addition up there. And I'm really glad to meet the student leaders. So thanks for bringing them out and glad to hear the few words from you guys. That's really wonderful. Finally, congratulations again to Michaela and Lori. You're both two great examples of why Canyon is a terrific school. So thanks to the two of you and to Canyon for coming out here. Thanks, Ms. Wong, for another wonderful presentation. Look forward to yet another one next year. And we will take a short, maybe three minute break, three minutes, please. And let those who might need to go home and do some homework or something leave us. So thank you very much for a great presentation. Back in session here. Do we have a representative from our bargaining partners? Do you know? Okay, so we'll welcome the President of the Castro Valley Teachers Association, Mark Malatich. Are you there, Mark? There. Welcome to the meeting, Mark.
Hi, thank you, guys. Thank you. Good evening. Yeah, as mentioned, we're a quarter of the year in and our membership continues to work hard for our community. This year is difficult, but our membership is as always doing everything we can to serve our students. There are a lot of obstacles, but there is nothing that we can't handle if we support each other and work collaboratively. When obstacles arise, we just need to solve these things and it's that simple. I've been pleased with the working relationship that we've had this year with the D O. For example, extending COVID leave illustrates the reality that we are still not out of the woods. And we want our membership and community to be safe and extending this leave is welcome. And we are grateful that CBU S D offered this to our staff. I also, like most people, really look forward to our younger students being eligible for the vaccination and hope that the number of students needing to isolate goes down. When students are in isolation or staff are in isolation, it creates just a lot of difficulty for families and our staff. But you know, there's always work to be done and problems to solve. Currently, like every other school district in California, we are dealing with a severe sub shortage, substitute teacher shortage. And many of our members have helped out by submitting for their colleagues. I do not see this shortage ending anytime soon. So one of our leadership goals is to have working conditions that are manageable so our members do not burn out. Losing prep and absorbing students from classes is difficult. And I am concerned about how long our teachers will continue to volunteer to substitute. Not because they don't want to help, but it is not sustainable to consistently lose prep and to manage more students. We should consider creative options. We may consider what other districts are doing. You could have D O staff substitute teach. We could have other folks in the district that might not be classroom teachers helping out. So yeah, just the first quarter has been challenging, but you know, we are in a good, better place than we were last year at this time. And if we pick each other up when we're down, we can get through these challenges. So I thank you and I hope everybody has a very nice evening. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Mark. We have one request for public comment and I will just remind everyone that because of the Brown Act and because these are items that are not agendized, the board can listen to but cannot discuss or take action on the issues presented. So we have one request, I believe.
Good evening, everyone. It's Austin Bruckner here. I'm here this evening on behalf of Castro Valley Pride. I want to thank the board, thank the superintendent for allowing this opportunity today. I'm here to speak on behalf of what I hope you would agree is a fruitful and beneficial partnership between Castro Valley Pride and Castro Valley Pride School District. We've worked together for over ten years since Castro Valley Pride was formed on a number of different things, including with some of your predecessors. It's this partnership that discourages me from being here this after, this evening. You'll imagine that Castro Valley Pride was deeply concerned when a when a concert was held at an unwelcoming church in our community, Neighborhood Church, also known as Three Crosses Church. Up until 2019, ran an active gay conversion therapy program referred to as their Hope Group. I hope we all acknowledge that gay conversion therapy does not work. And I hope we all will acknowledge it's a failure on behalf of the school district that an invitation was sent out to 3,000 plus families inviting them to an unwelcoming congregation, inviting families to a congregation that I believe does not uphold Castro Valley values and I hope does not uphold the values of Castro Valley Unified School District. I understand that a scheduling error is what the DO is going with in terms of why the event was rescheduled. It's unfortunate for I know the students that both may not feel safe to attend an unwelcoming church for a school event. But also for those that were prepared to perform that evening, I would ask that the district on behalf of LGBT students and staff, in fact, it's your responsibility to revise your policy to ensure that going forward, this doesn't occur in the future. If you do not have a policy on the books, I could see very easily another school sanctioned event being scheduled with a place that is not inclusive of all means all, which I understand is Castro Valley Unified School District motto. And I encourage you to take that seriously and to readdress your policy. I also would ask that the district make some true movement on Revitalize from the Days of Diversity Program, bringing that back and on the Rainbow Pathway Project that Castro Valley Pride has been working with some students on. As you may know, this Pathway Project has not been openly discussed during a board meeting as an agendized item. And frankly, I I don't feel that it's moving as fast as it should be. So I would ask that you take your partnership seriously and and really reaffirm your commitment to our LGBT students and staff. So thank you so much this evening and I wish you a great evening.
Thank you for your comments. We'll move on to item eight, which is the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I second that.
So moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Lavender.
I just want to recognize that we are as part of the consent agenda, we're adopting Resolution 142122, declaring November to be Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month. I think it's very important that we recognize the communities that were here before us and that we recognize the struggles that they face. And so I just wanted to say that, say that.
Thank you, Lavender. Is there any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, we'll start the vote. Jennifer.
Yes.
Lavender.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
And I'll say yes. So the consent agenda is approved three to zero. Move on to item nine, A, the superintendent's update.
All right. I'm very short update this time. I'm gonna talk about just a bit about COVID. As you see, here's our dashboard. I think we're doing really, really well. Percentage of cases point oh nine. And I again, thank you to students and families for following all of our requirements and and rules to keep us all safe and staff. And as you know, Governor Governor Newsom actually announced on October 1st that a student vaccination mandate would be required. But we're looking at the date for that to happen in July by around July 1st, 2022 for children in grade seven through 12. At this point, the goal and the effort is constantly on having clinics and making sure we encourage everyone who's eligible to get vaccinated. So that's statewide. The other piece I wanted to talk about are just district wide. There the one time funds that we have. Many of you have probably heard or attended, some of you have attended all of the sessions that Dr. Ryman has been holding to hear feedback about the funds that we have at our disposal during COVID for expanded learning opportunities as well as emergency relief. We've been seeking community input. Additionally, a survey will be sent out to gather additional input. And there are required parameters around that and there are various due dates for completion of plans. We do have to update the LCAP to include these funds as well and how they're spent. But what I want to say is today we had our first district student leadership alliance meeting and the room was full of awesome students. Jennifer was one of them. And we actually spent quite a bit of time doing an input session with them. And I tell you, they are the most wise, the most logical. Just amazing. They were such great feedback and Ms. Eagles was there as well and we took notes and we're going to share those. But everything they asked for and they talked about are things that we should be looking at and we are looking at and we need to follow through. So just amazing students. And then Human Resources has done a lot of great work to get to streamline the application. As you know, even students were saying, you know, we know we're short staffed for all sorts of things and just not in our school district, but everywhere. But to streamline the application, thank you, Dr. Zamora, for doing that so that we can make it easier for people to apply because we did hear that that was difficult to use at Joint. We've they've also had listings in the in the Valpak of Bay Area, a Mailer and also a joint posting in the Bay on Craigslist. We're going everywhere to ask to get employees and certified substitute rates that you approved to increase. A message went out to everybody on September 23rd to about the new sub rate. So I think that's it.
Any questions or comments for the superintendent? Nope. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item C, which is a resolution to excuse trustee Whitaker.
So I move that we adopt Resolution 15 dash 2122. And excuse the absence of trustee Lavender Whitaker.
This is an unusual circumstance, so I will second that. Presidents can do that and under weird circumstances. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll ask for a vote. Jennifer, Jennifer.
Yes.
I can vote yes for myself, correct?
Yes, you can. Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So the resolution is adopted three to zero. And we'll move on to item D, the minutes for the board meeting from September 22nd.
I'm of approval to adopt the minutes of the board meeting held on September 22nd, 2021.
And I second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. Jennifer.
Yes.
Lavender.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So that is they're adopted three to zero. On to the superintendent's report.
I wanted to actually just talk about this district student leadership alliance. Some of these students have been with us for four, five years and some were new, but just incredible group of students. And as we move forward, we will be, that would be the group that we actually meet with to get feedback on various things. So I'm very, very proud of them and it's just wonderful to see them. There was such energy in the room. And yeah, just great kids.
Anything else, Jennifer?
The only other thing that I forgot to mention is that I believe that this Friday, I don't know about other schools, but CVHS is having their walk and roll to school day. And also that during homecoming, we had a clothing drive and the clothing will be used towards we have a community closet at CVHS, which was actually made by our ASP president Lauren Green, which is located in the Wellness Center for like kids who you know, have trouble like buying clothes and stuff. So I just wanted to say that that was really cool. Other than that, nothing.
Thank you, Lavender.
I'm excited to get back to work. Next week I get to go to my first Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, looking forward to meeting the parents and hearing what they have to say. We have our special board meeting and I it's not the first meeting, but the second meeting of our Castro Valley Unified School District Ambassador meeting, which I'll be with Parveen and Gary. So I'm really looking forward to to go to that. And then separately, I'm not responding to the comments. This is something that I wanted to say myself was on the Board Policy Committee, we look at things and I know recently we changed our facility a priority for us to be first. And you know, obviously we're working as hard as we can to do that, but I also think that there needs to be certain separation of church and state. And I think that we need to be clear in our policies about not using religious facilities for educational purposes. And I just want to make sure that there's.
I at our next meeting, we'll take that policy back. Great. Some clarity around that is really important.
Thank you.
Dolly.
I was not able to represent the board per se and since our last board meeting other than I believe, I guess Jason had made this, I I was able to look at a, you know, slide presentation and, you know, just make one very small comment on that. And just changing the order of some words kind of thing, more grammar than anything. I I would like to support the idea that separation of church and state is a really good idea and that we should maybe not be using facilities, church facilities. I think I would, you know, support that too.
Thank you. So I'll be brief because it seems like it's a bit of a slow week or two weeks. Nothing for this representing the board, I have to say, but I did see a really excellent seminar with two researchers from Harvard who were talking about the genetics of sleep, which is really pretty fascinating. And I think it's always good to remember the importance of sleep to all of us. And so I'll just leave it with that and say remember to get plenty of sleep, which we don't unfortunately. So with that, thanks to everyone who came tonight and stayed with us, those online, we appreciate your attendance. And thanks to everybody here. And I will say the meeting is adjourned.